So let's call the January 28th. We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens with the first group called.
Commissioner Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Madden.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mr. Brand.
All presidents got the floor? First item on the agenda, citizen comments. Any citizens who do want to come forward to the commission, may you do so. We'd like for you to say that in a five-minute time frame, if possible, state your names, so we all know who you are for the purpose, keep the record. Okay, do we have a system, or would I see?
My name's Skip Hayes. I've laid some pictures there for you to go on. I see that the new garbage collection is being implemented. We received a small cart at my house. The small-sized cart is practically useless. It weighs as much as it already has trash in it. Has no handles with which to lift it if you have to carry it. A full standard garbage bag won't fit into it, as you can see in the picture. When we were required to provide a thirty-two-gallon container for the previous garbage collection system, this would accommodate a standard garbage bag and maybe two, also shown in the picture. What's gonna happen when everybody realizes that they thought they were gonna save money by getting a free trash cart container and realizes this one's too small for the weekly garbage discussion? To increase the size, to provide a can to one that's usable, the homeowners have to pay not only a monthly fee for the larger cart, but an arbitrary fifteen or twenty-dollar penalty. This is really a low-bow way of paying extra revenue. Mr. Wilder campaigned for five dollars, they said five dollars a month with a backdoor tax. What's different about this? Commissioner Wilder brags about saving the homeowner money. So the homeowner gets a free cart that may or may not be able to be utilized. But the homeowner that has chosen the mid-sized cart pays four dollars, saves twelve dollars a year. This is negligible. That's like two Big Macs. But the homeowner that is determined that need the large cart is now paying eighty-four dollars more a year than they were when they had the tax fee. And the homeowner that decides they can't use the carts and they need to use the bags have to pay at least sixty more dollars a year than the tax fee, assuming they can get by with one bag a week. Homeowners that have presented difficult circumstances, such as property search restrictions, ability to manipulate the cart, or having nowhere to store the carts, have been named by the commission hardship cases. First of all, this is name-calling, is offensive. The definition of hardship is extreme privation. The definition of privation is lack of the basic necessities or comforts of life. The city commission owes us an apology for this name-calling. These so-called hardship cases will be reviewed on a case-by-case decision. If we are allowed to be considered a hardship case, we'd be allowed to use the bags instead of carts. We're now being penalized again because we will have to pay in excess of sixty dollars more a year than we were with the present garbage system. How much more backdoor can you get? What happened to the opportunity to get the additional small-sized carts that was discussed in October? The commission renamed on us. It seems that the city commission has difficulty with vocabulary. Not only is there calling hardship cases, but there seems to be some difficulty understanding difference between incentive and penalty. We are made to believe incentives should provide expectations of reward, but the incentive in this case is fear of punishment or penalties. Penalty is a punishment established by law or authority for a crime or offense, or a forfeit, especially a sum of money, required for an offense. This new garbage system is whole penalties, not incentives. The increased size is, it costs you fifteen to twenty dollars to increase. The incorrect trash placement is a twenty-five-dollar fine, and we have a hardship penalty of about three dollars a bag, if we can get by with that. This ordinance has very little common sense. The two commissioners promoting it were only concerned with bottom-line dollars. We expect our city commission not only to find ways to use our tax money efficiently, but also provide services that are convenient to use. The previous five-dollar-a-month, sixty-dollar-a-year was something that could be stopped by voting out when revenues return, to cover expenses for the garbage system. This new system can no longer be reversed. Our tax money is tied up in too many hard costs. The new garbage system is now approaching or exceeding the cost of two million dollars in expenses. The city commission was not forthcoming in presenting this to taxpayers before voting to approve it and spend taxpayer money. We lost six hundred thousand dollars eliminating the five hundred fees. We spent nine hundred twenty-five thousand on carts, to be paid over several years, but were committed. We spent fifteen thousand on a so-called survey. Sixty thousand or more was spent on, will be spent on two new employees for this, to be used on this system. Five hundred thousand will probably be needed to be spent to buy at least two automated trucks, that I'm showing you a picture of, that they use in Louisville, so that they can pick up these carts. By the way, we'll be able to use that in downtown, that truck. And who knows what the cost of the rent for the several weeks to distribute these carts, but it's got to be thousands of dollars. This total was two million, one hundred thousand dollars. The so-called survey sent out in October, out to be, was turned out to be an order form for trash carts. Fifteen thousand was appropriated for a survey pertaining to proposed garbage changes. This was not a survey, and therefore, I was told that the citizens of Frankford, and the citizens' tax money was spent on this misinformation. We were to receive a pamphlet to describe the system and get instructions on recycling. I did not. There were no efforts to try to promote recycling by itself and leave the existing system alone. I had sent an email to everyone before the vote, everyone in the commission here, before the vote, that pertained to a serious issue regarding the need to change some requirements about storage of the trash cans and containers, that needed to be considered changing before you voted on. I believe, I only heard back from one commissioner, Mr. May, Commissioner May. This is bordering on rude, that nobody even replied or acknowledged they had received my email. I sent it to the email on the site. I want, I want to know when the city commission will decide to start charging school tax by how many children a family have. I should get refunds if they don't have any children. This, of course, is ridiculous, because we know our taxpayers pay for this. However, this is where things seem to be headed, if the city commission believes that some homeowners should pay more for garbage collection than other homeowners, when this is supposed to be paid by a tax service. I feel I wasted my votes on this commission. The worst two votes I made in two years, Mr. Turner and Mr. Wilder.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. In the academy, remember the program. Commissioner Wilder, just to clear up a couple of things, I'm sorry, if you feel the way you feel. I mean, we've obviously spoken about this at great length, in and out of commission meetings. And just to clear up a couple of misconceptions, and I'm sorry you object to the term hardship, but to be clear, the folks who can't handle the carts, who need bags instead, they're not gonna be required to pay three dollars per bag, per se. They'll receive an equivalent amount of bags to the cart side, who otherwise have ordered. So for example, anybody who feels they can get by with the thirty-five-gallon cart, every month would receive five free bags a month. Anybody who feels they can get by with the sixty-five-gallon cart would receive nine bags a month for four dollars a month. So the folks would receive the same amount of trash capacity for the same price, it would just come in by way of bags, as opposed to carts. And for what it's worth, I mean, the commission doesn't set school tax rates. And in terms of the information regarding the program, the program obviously isn't going to effect until February. We just wanted to get the carts out in time to make sure the folks has time to get used to them, both our staff and the public. And also the folks' time to make sure that they have the right size cart to fit their needs, for the program actually goes into effect. But the pamphlet and the free bag, six months worth of free bags, etc., are included inside the recycling cart. I don't know if you checked in there, but that's where you'll find it. Instead, on the lid of the recycling cart, is a list of all materials that are recyclable and can be recycled in the carts.
I'd have to make another trip to our neighborhood and weed again.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of mistakes, I mean, I'm sure.
Just a second now, we're gonna have a conversation now. I'd like for you to come back up, if you all own essence, you can put it in.
I just wanna clarify one thing with Mr. Hayes. The hardship, I understand the terminology, the bags, but it's also a topographical for situations like yours, and there's many others in our community, where the bags are allowed.
I realize that I object to the term hardship.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Turner, I just wanna add to what other commissioners have already said. Actually, the reason why we put a geographical hardship in place was really as a direct result of you coming and speaking for the commission and talking about your unique situation, being on the hill over there on Newing Street, and not being able to take the candy. What you said at the time is, is that it's easier to haul a bag down than as a can. And so we put that provision in the ordinance to address issues.
I realize that. I object to the terminology hardship. I don't like, I'm not, you know, I'm not a, I don't not meet the term, the definition of hardship. I have a difficult site, call it something else. I don't like the term.
Seeing your issue with semantics there, but.
Well, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay. Well, sorry, thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. I, oh, I didn't like to thank you. I did read you. I was agreeing with you.
Yeah.
And that's why I didn't like to thank you about that. Okay. All right, we can, in another citizen's time. All right, this will be on the outside. Discussion of tentative agenda, fifty minutes.
Everyone's had the opportunity to look at the tentative agenda, and then tentative edition.
Is that okay? Okay, now we have a city manager report and staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. One thing I wanted to notify the commission and the public, that the city has submitted a letter of request to the state government, asking for, for funding for a traffic study for downtown area. Hoping to get that appropriated through the session.
That's really great.
Now we'll have our staff reports. I'll start out with Dulson. If you don't mind, please come forward.
I'm going to talk about the Drupal project. Since we talked about the, the project, I have talked to Charlene about creating a, some type of specs on the outsourcing. And then I've tried to look for vendors around who are really doing Drupal project, or Drupal software. And there's only one. The company.
Wall Wallen.
I tried to look for other places, like Mike Allen's, but they, they don't use Drupal at all. So if we have to outsource it, there would be only one vendor that can do it. So I don't know if we still have to formally write a contract to do that, or, but I think the main reason we're here is because I'd like to discuss if we, you know, we really have to outsource. Charlene Robbie could talk about the progress of her work and see if that could be done. Can you brief them about what you have done?
Well, I have all the content, except some of the demos for the agendas, already on there, and the pages, all the pages are done. It's just the look and feel of a homepage, a front page. I'm just not for sure what you want on the homepage, what you don't want on the homepage, things like that.
Okay, Commissioner Turner, if the commission was able to give you more direction, for example, say if you voted at lunch session, going over the website, going in ideas and comments, would you be able then to do it? And as it sounds like, you've got a lot of it migrated over, it's just a matter of direction is what you're looking for, in terms of where you go, is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder, that's encouraging to hear. I spoke with Walt Wallen about this pretty recently, and even though he's the only available consultant in this area, his advice was that we not outsource it. Walt's been working, you know, pro bono with Charlene pretty closely, and his sense is that Charlene's gotta get enough grip on the program to put it, to put it together with adequate guidance from us. And so I'd be really happy to see, you know, to see our, I don't want to see Charlene take a crack at it personally.
I'll be gone for three weeks, so I won't be here to really deliberate about it. So I'll, later this time, or you all decide, the interface, the colors and everything. See, I actually have a five-month site. But see, I probably, we're actually setting up a projector here that you might be able to see that, or website, live.
I have some cities that I'd like very designed, and just want your opinion. And I have, I have written out a mock-up of what I think ours looks like, and I can make it, definitely, and present it to you if you want. We can sit down and see what you want on the homepage and how to look.
Okay, you seem like, Commissioner, like you see that, if the city manager works, you keep you on.
My understanding that if you do a mock-up, it can still be tweaked and changed, and so it's not set in concrete. So if you would, if the commission would be happy for us to move in that direction, we could just perhaps go ahead and get it to a draft final stage, and then bring it into the commission and approve it.
Is there something that you, you know, like one item that you want on that homepage that has to be there, that is there?
If I could, I'd say that the problem with the design of our current, of our current homepage, is it lists, it's got dozens and dozens and dozens of links on it. And some of those links, I'm sure, are accessed, or probably others.
Yes.
And so, well, I assume that you all have access, I assume that you all know which link should be hit.
Yes. I have a list of the most popular.
So obviously, the most popular link should be made most accessible. And beyond that, I just, I guess I'd like the emphasis given to the actual audio and video recordings in the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Turner, city manager, take it in here. Mr. Davis, Mr. Hayes.
Sorry, Mayor. Just how many clicks sometimes it takes to get information? Sure. So if I go to building zoning, planning zoning, and then it puts me right back to downloads or links? Right. Just to kind of keep the clicks, minimize how much time it takes to search the site for something?
Yes. Right now, how I have the departments, the only thing related to that department is on that page. I have a downloads, I have a queue. Everything about that department is on the page. That's how I have it right now, for department. That way, it can minimize if you're looking for stuff there.
You just gotta go click and be there.
Yes.
If I could make one final note, but I'm sorry. The purpose of the website is to make the city and all the departments available to the public, and to make all this information available to the public, then when we go into this fourth session, I think it'd be good for the department heads to think about what information from their own departments they'd like to see out there, so that they can bring that, bring that to the table.
It's not already here.
Sure.
Okay. So I'll coordinate with Mr. Goings and.
Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, Fred. I just wanna give you an update on where we are on the garbage billing for this last six-month period. I wanna give you an update, and I'd like to ask if we could add some additional information onto that bill. First thing is, we plan to send a garbage invoice out next Thursday, excuse me, next Tuesday, the seventeenth. And the bill will be dated January fifteenth. The reason why there's a day lapse there is because we got Martin Luther King Day, it's Monday the sixteenth. The due date of that bill will be February twenty-ninth, approximately forty-five minutes. February twenty-ninth. And just a little bit of description about the layout. It will have on there if you owe any garbage fee for two thousand nine, if you owe any garbage fee for two thousand ten, if you've got a prepaid garbage bill for two thousand ten. And then it'll net that, that information, and then it'll have the garbage fee from seven, one, eleven through twelve, thirty-one, eleven, for thirty dollars. So it'll net out. So, you know, we've got several people that will owe nothing on that, because it's got the credit built into it. The only thing I would like to ask the commission to do, or consider, is charging, we have never charged any interest or penalty on delinquent payments for garbage fees, but I'd like the commission to consider one percent interest per month on those delinquent bills going forward. Because we pretty much settled everything, we should at this point settle, you know, our garbage system at this point. So, and I would put that, you know, lay that out on the, on the garbage invoice, so it'll be clear.
Of course, we can't get the official invoice this time, but we can give a mayor or general fee.
Yeah, I didn't know what you did. Yeah, well, the thing about it is, I need to kind of, I've gotta get a feel for that, because the invoice is gonna go out before or next week.
Well, how can we support it, would you say?
Commissioner. Is that gonna be compounded, like based on, it's one percent per month, and then the next month it's gonna be in addition?
No, just one percent a month. Just one percent a month, yeah. It's not, it's not compounded, yeah. It'd just be a flat, one percent a month. So for example, they didn't pay, you know, the bills due in February, they didn't pay in March, they would just tack on one percent, so, you know, one percent add-on to the bill.
Of the original amount?
Of the original amount, yeah. Of the amount that was due at the end of February. I mean, it's pretty, this is pretty standard, what we do on all our other bills. It's standard, you know, like on the property collection.
My two cents, I think it probably is a good idea. It's a good mechanism to encourage people to pay the bill on time and not get delinquent because I know that not only was that an issue internally in the past, but, you know, with previous garbage bills, but it's also an issue in the public as well. Why should I pay my bill if someone's stuff came as a, as a humorous, so. Maybe that's a good idea.
Getting a feel, majority of the commission, I guess, is the time of year. Okay. I think you're fine, I think you're safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, Hart.
Does any report?
Chief Boyhoit, no report. Don Hughes, first time. Ty Bart.
Mr. City Manager, I've got a real quick question for Hart, and you don't have to come up here if you don't want to. I was down at Coast Spring the other day, this is probably, actually, a couple of weeks ago, and there was a picnic table in the middle of the overlooked area there. Are you all familiar with that? Has that been reported by any staff?
The Wetlands?
Yeah.
Yes.
Have we managed to get that out of there yet?
We'll probably get it out this week.
Okay, great, thank you. And, well, there were a lot, there were some trees that had gone down over the trail there.
We put the heaviest one, we've lost, it's not far, look, it weighs about four hundred pounds, we didn't think anybody would lift it and go over it. People wanna do something, they can do.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Ty Bart, could you give us an update on the distribution of the trash and recycle carts?
Sure. As of today, all the carts are out, been distributed. St. Clair Mall, one, we withheld the delivery of the cans. There's a lot of multifamily units that we need to figure out. It probably looks like bags would be the best option for them, because there's nowhere for them to store the carts, so we'll be working with the property owners of those apartment units. But, so we're done with the distribution, and we asked everybody to kind of hold off on changing out cart sizes until we got done distributing the cans, because they're all scanned to the address. So now we can go back and change out the carts and reattach the new address to the new can size. But just for your information, I asked, we have a phone bank. When people call City Hall, they're directed down to our sanitation building, and we have three employees manning the phone bank. And I was asking today, I go, what are the top five questions you're getting, because they're getting calls, and so I thought it might be interesting for you all to hear kind of the top five. Number one is, the public is confused about the bags. We've had, we've seen where the bags, overflow bags are put in the recycling cart, and people are putting recycling in the bags in the recycling cart. So we're trying to, you know, under, make them understand how to use those overflow bags, if there's a limited number of bags, when things do not fit in the cart, to use the bags. And that's gonna be effective February first, so there's really no sense in using a bag until February one. Second question is, of course, they wanna know how they are gonna be billed, and of course, the finance department will send them a notice with their property taxes. And then the third question is, they wanna know the four free pickup days, what the dates were gonna be. So we'll be putting dates together, and putting a notice in the paper, and then on our website, to let people know when that free week is gonna be. Number four, what, they got the wrong-sized cart, how do they change it? And at this point, the probably the best way is to call City Hall, and that will get their request and change it out, and will probably be the next three or four weeks changing our cart sizes. Number five, what do I do with my old cans, and will they take them? So recycling can, or bins and old trash cans, if people would put a note on the can, if they want us to pick them up, just put a note, a tape, and we'll pick them up on their regular trash bag. So that's the top question.
So clarifying, so it sounds like, folks, trash cans will not be picked up, as in if somebody doesn't?
We want them to, you know, a lot of cases, they're gonna reuse them, or brush, possibly. So we want them to specifically write a note on the can, so we don't accidentally pick up trash cans. Or the old recycling bin, because they may have another use hoard, or they may be able to bring it in their house, and have a place to put recycling, and then take it out and dump it in the can. So we pretty much require them to put a note on the can or on the bin before we take it, just because we don't wanna take it anywhere.
Safe and sorry.
I guess one other, on the exemptions, we're gonna run into, I'm sure, the next three or four weeks, dealing with property owners, maybe some things that we haven't really thought of. One, for example, of medical waste. If we give them bags, rather than, you know, rather than cans, then I guess the concern would be animals getting into the bags or something. And there's a, I guess, can we make some cases where maybe it doesn't give them a second small can, rather than using bags, if it's medical waste, and kind of meet with the property owner, and have some leeway, give them some exceptions, where if it's beneficial for both the property owner and the city, to work something else out other than the bags? And we have some kind of leeway to kind of work with those special cases.
Long word.
Because we can't really guess what's gonna come down the road in the next three or four weeks, but try to work with the property owners and give us some leeway to try to make it work for both the city and the residents.
Just, thank you, Chris. I had two citizens contact me when I walked from the office. And they said one thing, they found that people stealing the bags, in the cans or whatever in the garbage, come down and step them off and pilfer them. They, it's just about one of the things.
Right, okay. I can see where they deliver the cans, some people not even realize that we put the bags in the. realize that we put the bags in the recycling cart, but they're not even looking in the recycling cart when they've delivered it. They're rough with those carts, they, the bag falls down the bottom of the cart, and they don't even realize there's bags in there, and they start throwing stuff away.
Some of these people stole them.
Or they stole them, so, so we're running into some of that as well, so.
I also had some phone calls regarding people not wanting their recycle cans, but also letting them know that the bags are inside, you know, just pick up the lid and grab your bags out. Um, so if citizens don't want the recycle cans, it's.
If they would put a tag on it and let them know, and let us know that, yes, those are, we've had a couple cases where, uh, we've been following the distributor every day, and they'll specifically say, I don't want the can for my tenant or my, my house.
Right.
And so we ask them, again, put a, the note and tape it on the can, and we'll come by and pick it up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller, question?